Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Dr. Jones? Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by acclamation. June, could you go through some of the outstanding or old action and task items, please?
Thank you. There are two, there are four outstanding action items. Two of them will be updated in the January 11th. Two of them from January 11th will be updated in this Friday's update, Friday update. Two of them are related to scores and the letters numbers training, which are still both in progress. And as soon as we have that information, that will be sent to the board. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And just taking a step back, welcome everybody tonight. I'm glad you were able to make it out on a really balmy evening. So it's nice to see everybody here in the audience. Next on the agenda, we have eight individuals who've indicated that they wish to address the board this evening. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. First up, we have Ms. Dahlia Rodriguez. And Ms. Rodriguez, you're welcome to come to the... Welcome, Ms. Rodriguez. We'll be giving you three minutes if you, for your comments. And if you would like a translation, we will have another three minutes for that as well.
Okay. Okay. Good night, everybody.
I'm here to be thankful for the great opportunity that you are giving me.
That James wouldn't be close.
We're working on that. And we greatly appreciate this as a community. And as a community, we're talking to other communities that together we can achieve a lot. Without the language, the race... And where we come from, and at the end, it'll be all a good outcome.
I'm very thankful for the opportunity for us, for the education board.
Well, I'm very thankful for the opportunity for us, for the education board.
The opportunity you give to us. I tried my English, I'm sorry. So I really appreciate it, you know, to the space that you give to us. This is, we grow like a community. So we, we a parent. I know you, you make a lot of decisions for everybody, but we know you guys working hard. So we're working with the school, with the community. I try hard, I know. I try hard to my English, but I'm afraid to speak. But I don't speak, I don't afraid like that much when I'm a star. So I know we can have a lot of things, we know can, we can be powerful. So I really appreciate it. It's like one tree. It's a lot of branches, but it's one, one objective. So we see like a big, big fruit. So it's our kids. Because when they know, like the parents, like we can do it. I know when they say, mommy, I can do it. You can do it, because if I do, you can do it. So I know this is a lot of opportunities for us, for my family, for my communities here. So this is my stop here. Just so you know, we're working on it, and James will be better and better. And thank you for the really, really opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rodriguez. Okay, Mr. David Cunningham, we have you next as a speaker. I'm not seeing Mr. Cunningham, so I'm going to go next, Mr. John Fierro. Mr. Fierro, you know the drill. It's nice to see you back here. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Well, good evening Acting Chair Wolfsee and Chairman Hogan, who's joining us virtually, as well as members of the board, and certainly Dr. Collier, our superintendent. I'm John Fierro. I'm a Westport alumni. I'm a Westside resident, and I serve as the president and CEO of Matty Road Center. I'm here to ask you to adopt the revised Blueprint 23 recommendations that Dr. Collier presented at the last meeting. As a former school board member representing District 3, I know firsthand the enormous job that each and every one of you have. And let me say, thank you. It is not an easy job, and I know your role is to ensure that our kids have a first-class public education. And I think the evidence of your work is our accreditation. So we definitely want to continue to build upon that. I would just tell you that Matty Road Center, which has had a long history of working with the Kennesaw Public Schools, is committed to helping to ensure a thriving school system. A few examples that I would point out. One, probably the last half of 2022, Matty Road Center came together with several of our partners in the Northeast community, the Lykan's Neighborhood Association, Latinx Education Collaborative, and others, to begin to look at not only what we wanted to say to you in regards to the original plan, but looking beyond in terms of how can we help with regards to improving, increasing enrollment, maintaining the required attendance, and certainly achieving high academic standards. Also, Matty Road Center has launched in the Westside neighborhood, a placemaking project. We were granted $50,000 from the Health Forward Foundation. And we have already, we're in the midst of a process with probably 20 different community stakeholders and residents. And our goal is to be able to provide you with a vision once you get prepared for the bond package. So we're already working ahead. And then obviously, want to thank Dr. Collier for continuing the Hispanic Advisory Committee. I'm prepared to be a part of that. And as I shared with her, we want to definitely make sure that we have some tangible outcomes, that we can demonstrate our commitment to all of our educators, but more importantly, our Hispanic principals and teachers. So finally, I would just once again ask you, please support Dr. Collier, her revised recommendations for the Blueprint 2030. And just know that the Matty Road Center is here, prepared to address those challenges and opportunities as outlined by Dr. Collier at last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up would be Mr. Greg Lombardi. Welcome, Mr. Lombardi. It's nice to see you again. You know you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Greg Lombardi. I'm with the Lykan's Neighborhood Association. We are the proud home of Whittier Elementary School. And we are very happy and very grateful at the possibility that Whittier is going to remain open for the future. In the last three months, we've had the opportunity to talk with all the current board members and with Dr. Collier, and we have been impressed. We have been impressed by your willingness to listen to difficult feedback and to have frank discussions about really difficult issues. We've been particularly impressed by Ms. Cortez, who has spent a ton of time talking with us and debating the issues in a very thoughtful manner. But we've been most impressed by Dr. Collier. And Dr. Collier has stood in the line of fire through a very difficult situation and never gotten defensive, always listened, and has used the information that she has gotten from this to make a plan that is a gigantic improvement over the initial plan. Through it all, she has shown intelligence, pragmatism, and gutsy leadership. And she has shown that her top concern is the welfare for the kids of this district. It really is tremendously impressive. I would say those are fantastic qualities for an interim superintendent. And I would also say that those are really good qualities for a permanent superintendent. There are parts of the plan that we don't agree with, and we will continue to give feedback on that. And we also know that our work as a neighborhood is not yet done. In the last three months, we have really found that we have a school that's worth fighting for. It's doing an excellent job for kids who are at risk. And we are going to continue fighting for it. And as part of that fight, we have raised $6,000 for parent ambassadors, using parents from the school to go out and recruit kids to come and be in the excellent school that the neighborhood is offering. We've got Tricia McGee, who is a fantastic parent and student advocate, as I think you guys know. And she's going to be leading the campaign for us. We will make all of the information that we develop in this campaign available to all schools, to all parents, to the district, because we know that this is a tough fight. We hope that the district will invest as much as it can in this local neighborhood marketing campaign. We strongly feel that every cent that you put into it will be very well-spent funds. So we also hope, and we ourselves plan on being involved in the subcommittees that Dr. Collier is forming. This, the district has a lot of great schools that are worth fighting for, and we hope that everybody is willing to rise to that challenge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lombardi. Next to the microphone would be Ms. Jameka Kendricks. Ms. Kendricks, welcome. You have three minutes.
All right. My name is Jameka Kendricks. It's been a long time since I've been in front of you. I am here today to talk about Blueprint 2030. As you can, and my comments are primarily for the board, not necessarily Dr. Collier. As you consider tonight's school closure vote, I ask that you consider Board Policy 2.7, which outlines the board's commitment to owner engagement and to being an advocate with the students' best interest as your guiding principle. Something superintendents Covington and Tunis failed to do when closing schools in 2010 and 2016. While they listened to stakeholder feedback, they failed to take counsel from stakeholders. Their failure to confer with stakeholders as experts on their children and communities further damaged the trust between KCPS and the families and communities we serve. And in my opinion, is largely why we have found ourselves in a position to close schools every six years. Over the last few weeks, I've had the opportunity to engage parents and staff at both TruSt and Longfellow, including TruSt's parents who decided to take a chance on public education or public schools because they wanted their children to experience the type of long-lasting friendships neighborhood schools facilitate. And frustrated teachers, who have not been able to have the impact they would like to have on students due to high student turnover and its impact on the classroom learning environment. As three board members and Dr. Collier heard last night at the Longfellow parent meeting, our school communities understand the need to prioritize student safety and stability by closing buildings. Their concern is not the building closures, but how the district plans to maintain or establish strong learning environments that support students' academic progress, repair the harm created in those communities affected by the closures, and work with stakeholders to minimize or eliminate the need for future school closures. They recognize that closures may be inevitable due to decisions made by previous boards and superintendents. However, like many of you, these stakeholders believe that stable learning environments are in our students' best interest, even if it means voting to close two buildings tonight. At this time, as one administrator put it, our stakeholders are looking to you to just vote and rip the Band-Aid off so they can begin to prepare for whatever is next. While the three-year Blueprint 2030 strategic planning process has not been pretty and really does feel like a long wait to have a Band-Aid ripped off, Dr. Collier's handling of this plan and the recommended closures as an interim has been exemplary. She has demonstrated a willingness to listen to and consider stakeholder feedback in her recommendations, and has challenged stakeholders to continue showing up to identify and hold the district accountable for meeting the needs of students, families, and the communities we serve. In doing so, she has inspired a number of parents, staff, and community members, like myself and the other speakers before me, to support our students and schools in ways we had not previously considered. In approving Dr. Collier's recommendation tonight and trusting her to see this plan through, you as a board have an opportunity to do what previous boards and superintendents have not. Rebuild trust between KCPS and its stakeholders, a trust that has been broken for decades, and to end the cycle of school closures we find ourselves in today. You have an opportunity to support a superintendent who is not looking to stay for a short time and make a name for herself, but one who has remained committed to our district for more than two decades, one who has vested interests and a deep understanding of our community and the challenges it faces. A superintendent committed to adhering to Board Policy 2.7, Board Policy 2.7, which states, "It is essential that the owners are encouraged, supported, and recruited to contribute their time, knowledge, skills, ideas, and solutions to KCPS." Two more sentences. And Board Policy 4.2, that requires the superintendent to communicate, meet, and confer with stakeholders regarding decisions that affect the entire school or more than one entire school to accomplish our shared vision outlined in Policy 0.0, to foster a very barrier-free environment where all students have equitable access to an excellent education within our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up would be Ms. Margarita Friedman. Oh, sorry, I did go in the wrong direction. Ms. Friedman, I'm sorry. And next is Ms. Kennedy, Ms. Alicia Kennedy. Sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for the opportunity to address the board tonight. And Dr. Collier, for your leadership. I will echo the sentiments of many of my peers and colleagues that have expressed their gratitude for the way you have handled this process. It was quite the conundrum as you stepped into this role as the interim to inherit this challenge of being able to explain Blueprint 2030 and to receive the intense feedback from community. But I'd like to applaud you on the way you've handled the feedback and navigated a process that has got us to a place of calm tonight, which is reflected by the limited number of people that showed up. Because many of the people who were most concerned and most felt like they were the most impacted realize that they are no longer on the chopping block. And so while that is good, we still have an obligation to stay engaged as we go forward, which is also incorporated into Dr. Collier's revised plan. I, Alicia Kennedy, Kennesaw Public School graduate, Northeast High School, class of 1997. I was educated in KCPS during DSEC. So my whole K through 12 experience was pretty much through the DSEC process. So cool buildings, great magnet-themed programs, busing, the whole nine. I went through that whole experience. And they've written books about it, there's documentaries about it. But more importantly, there are a lot of lessons learned from that experience. And so we are living with vestiges today of the experimentation of educating our children. Urban education is not easy. There are a lot of challenges. It's not just reading, writing, arithmetic. There's a lot of social and economic issues that are at stake in the work that needs to be done. But again, the losses that we have experienced over the last 20, 30 years are lessons to be learned in how this board and this leadership governs going forward. I think it's important for this board to be mindful of what those lessons are and take those in consideration, as you all have been receptive to the feedback we've given you up to this point. But more importantly, that this board provide leadership and statedness to provide the confidence that we need these families to have to be willing to put their kids in KCPS. Over the holiday break, I shared with some people the marketing materials I got. I got two or three really slick lit pieces from Frontier. I got one small postcard from KCPS. Now, mail is not the difference maker. I've ran enough campaigns to know that's not the difference maker. Word of mouth is. But we have to be able to tell a very cohesive story about what KCPS represents, who its customer is, and what we're doing well. And so I look forward to working with you all in that process and furthering that work. More importantly, I asked this board to support Dr. Collier. You guys have updated the timeline on the superintendent selection for the end of February. I think it's important that we maintain the confidence that she has instilled in community and build on the goodwill that she's established. And the ongoing engagement with the call to action from community and the geo-bond obligation. We have to get those same people back in the room that were here before saying, "Don't close our schools," to be committed to keeping our schools open and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kennedy. Okay, now, Ms. Margarita Friedman. Sorry about that. Ms. Friedman, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, here? Okay, okay. Margarita Friedman, I'm a mother, immigrant, well, single parent. And I know the issues most many parents face. I come here for, to ask you to reconsider the closing of the schools. You will not solve a problem, you will aggravate the problems of crime in the community, of problems with the children, and lack of opportunities. We need to collaborate, we, you, and us, all of us, to collaborate to solve the problem. We have a lot of skills as community members to share with other people, with the people who need them. But we don't have a place where to do it. And you have the place. We don't need more, yeah, we do need more housing for seniors, for everything, we do. But more important, we need to stop the problem from the roots. Children need a support we can give with your mentoring program. But your mentoring program, the way you present it is, oh, I don't have the adjective, but it means doesn't work, okay? It doesn't attract, it doesn't arise the need to commit to it. You have it too sanitary. And people need to know that there is a risk of children falling into crime, not having a parent at home, that they need someone to hold them and prevent them. Give them the security, the confidence in themselves that they need to believe they can make it. And that is not happening. Sanitation, in this case, it doesn't work. We need to know the members, the wound, and the risks children have. Also, we all, everybody here has something to share. All of us have a skill that we can give to somebody. We can teach how to cook, to knit, to paint, to sing, to cha-cha, to hip-hop. If not, we have the teachers. But where? Teach in the park? We have to close it in winter. Where? In, yes, we have the egg. But it's this tiny. So we can do nothing. We need an adult education center. And you have one. We're never raising funds with donations. We will build it. But other people can build their housing projects. We already have a school. It's closed. We can make it a kitchen. We can teach residents to teach, to have their own business, to paint, to knit, to cook, to sing. We are the teachers. We are the problem. We are the solution. But where? Where? Just ask you. Don't close more schools. Engage us to be part of the solution, being real mentors. Be on the news, be on the program, have a video, have something, so we can truly help. Give us a place, and we will do it. We will raise the funds. We'll figure it out. We'll teach for free.
Thank you very much, Ms. Friedman. Thank you. And tonight, we'll close out with Mr. Tom Love. Mr. Love, please come up. You will have three minutes.
Well, I'd like to start by bragging on Lincoln Academy. The students there can all read and do math on grade level at the end of fifth grade. And what happened? Are they number one in the state? Sumner Academy, the same rules, same standards. The children in the district can be incredibly successful if we implement the correct program. And I think what's been going on, unfortunately, could be identified with what Dr. Bedell first told me when he had here. I asked Dr. Bedell to check into Aletha Schools, and he opened up his laptop, and he said four words. He said, "The demographics don't match." I knew what he meant by that. And when I went into him on the literacy law that was passed 20 years ago, that we were not complying with, I mentioned it to him again, and he said two words. He said, "They're brown." Now, I know that, because when I first got here, Eric West said that children, or, he said, first he said, "You know, you want to blow up the pipeline to prison, don't you?" And I said, "I sure do." He said, "No one's ever turned around a black urban school district in the country." This is like 11 years ago. We've got a serious problem when you look at third-grade reading scores. That's what the pipeline to prison is. If they're two years or more behind, it's a bad situation. They're at risk. And we can fix that. It's not that difficult. It's not some sort of patent. You can go over and look at Aletha and see that the bottom 20% are tutored by a master's rereading specialist in K through second. And they get over 500 hours of tutoring before they enter third grade. The children here, when I started, got zero. The same thing was happening in St. Louis. They had all these instructional coaches, 30-some instructional coaches. They're supposed to teach the teachers how to be better teachers. They don't know how to teach someone with dyslexia, which is about 30% of the inmates. You know, two-thirds are illiterate, functionally illiterate in prisons. We've got to stop this. And I want to ask the kindergarten teachers to be in charge of kindergarten. They can determine whether a child's ready to, has completed kindergarten standards for Missouri. We were breaking a law. We have children in third grade, entering third grade this year. They're seven years old prior to August the 1st, and they weren't even allowed, I mean, they weren't required to enter first grade unless they were seven prior to August the 1st. And we're breaking, we broke the dad gum law. We need to, we need to go ahead and get this fixed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Love. Okay, I'm going to ask one more time, just in case Mr. Cunningham, David Cunningham, came in while we were... Okay, nope. I just wanted to make sure he had an opportunity. Next on the agenda, we have a report from the District Advisory Council from Ms. Lyle. I was trying to see if I recognized Ms. Lyle in the audience. I do not. All right. We will move on next to the Board of Directors' report. First up on the Board of Directors' report is our new Board Treasurer, Ms. Rita Cortez.
So, take one. First, as I get started here, I want to thank Ms. Thompson for educating me quickly as to the topics that we're going to cover here. I'm going to wait for us to get to the slide deck. One of the things that I'll note while she's getting us to the, here we go, the financial report. You'll notice that, for those of you who are regularly here and regularly with us online, we have simplified the presentation format for the financial reporting. Those of you who'd like to see the more detailed version that we have historically presented, that is available online at the KCPS website. And we'll still make that detailed version available. We just wanted to put together a version that was a little bit easier to digest in a very short period here. With that, I will move along. Couple of quick notes as we go through the slides. First, year-to-date revenues are over expenditures due to tax revenue distribution beginning in December. So December is the month where we flip from negative operations to positive operations. A couple of important notes related to the kind of timing of expenses that you'll see in this report. As of the end of December, the budget should typically be 50% expensed. Currently, overall, the budget shows at 36.2% expensed with another 7% encumbered. So right now, we're running about 6.7% behind anticipated expenditures. Kind of the explanation, some of those are timing-related. Most of our capital work, particularly the work related to the SRO III funding, will take place or be encumbered in quarters two and three of our fiscal year. Our debt service timing tends to fall more in the third and fourth quarter. And then the other thing that drives the delta right now is open positions throughout the district. KCPS faces some of the, some challenges that our peers around the state face. And that does result in reduced expenditures in this first half of the year. Next slide, please. Here you'll see that the biggest change from our November to our December report is that tax, local tax revenues begin to be collected largely in December. We've collected about just under 45%. That is slightly below the same percentage at this time in 2022, but I think less than half a percent difference. So we're largely in line with anticipated revenues. County revenue typically is collected in, late in the third quarter and into the fourth quarter of our fiscal year. So that line remains the same. State revenue, as we remind you, I think every time we do a fiscal report, the way that the revenue formula works, our revenue is re... the way that the revenue formula works, our revenue is redirected to our charter school peers here in the Kansas City area. However, what you see reflected on year-to-date is largely the change in funding this year related to transportation, because the state funded additional, funded, funded the appropriate resources for transportation this year, which is kind of unusual. You'll see that in our report. Finally, and we can go to the next slide, please. This pie always shows the balance of revenues. The vast majority of our revenues come from local sources. But the federal slice has largely not come into the district yet. Most of that is related to the SRR3 funding, the capital outlays for HVAC and air quality improvements that will take place or be contracted this year. In addition, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education just recently approved our Title I funds, and we'll begin seeing that. The most important part, though, that I would show on this slide, as we think about, as we plan for future years here in KCPS, is that the slice of the pie in this chart that shows federal revenues will decrease substantially with the ending of SRR3, which is in, at the end of next fiscal year. So the role that local revenues plays will continue to grow. Next slide, please. This shows a breakout of our expenditures. As we've noted historically, salaries and benefits are the largest expenditure by the district. I do want to, though, note, in terms of kind of where we are, supplies and materials, this is a line that's much closer to budget than it has been historically, and I have to give kudos to my predecessor, Mr. Barca, for his fierce advocacy for the use of resources at the, at the building level by each of our teachers in their classrooms, and I hope that that focus continues. And this is really just a recap of some of the other pieces that we've discussed. So, next slide, please. This is just a visual representation of kind of the role that salaries and benefits play in our budget. It is by far the largest portion, nearly two-thirds of our operating expenditures relate to salaries and benefits. Next slide, please. And that, this really just lays out, as, as tax revenues come in, in December and January largely, we invest those so that we have resources available for all of the remaining periods. If all of your revenue comes in in a very short period of time, you have to budget availability of resources throughout the course of the next 12 months. Did I cover everything, Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Not a question, just a, it's nice to, in the State of the State address, that the governor did mention it's one of his priorities to actually have transportation fully funded, the state obligation at least, so cross your fingers.
24?
Yes. Mr. Hogan, if you're online, I just, it, speak up, because I can't see you. So if you do have questions, okay, I just, there you are.
As long as you guys can hear me okay, then.
And, and for those in the audience, he wanted to be here today, but had work take him out, and because of the snowstorm-ish, the snow, he had to leave early. So he's, he is here with us. Okay, so moving on, Ms. Ford, I'm going to go ahead and let you provide the Superintendent Search Committee update, if that's okay.
Good evening, everyone. Since our last search update that I gave, I believe that was in our last meeting in December, the board was able to meet with our search firm, who again is JG Consulting. We received what is being referred to as a summary report, which outlined basically all of the superintendent search engagement that took place in November, December, and even the beginning of this year. It's a document that looks like this, that will soon be located on the website for folks to be able to see what is in it. Engagement so far in the search has consisted of meetings with community stakeholders, district staff, the board, community town halls, and even a survey that went out to the broader community. So themes from all of the engagement that took place were compiled and put into this summary report, and again, that will be shared on our website. Utilizing themes from the summary report, the board also finalized and approved a leadership profile that is being used to source candidates. Our search process and timeline has also been updated and put on our website for all to see. And per that timeline, the application portal for candidates is open at this time and will close January 31st, which is next week. We have some interviews that will be taking place by round. First round taking place February 10th and 11th. Second round occurring February 16th and 17th. And we intend to be able to identify the finalists by the end of February. Regarding the search process overall, I wanted to reiterate that the board is invested in securing the best possible candidates. At the advisement of JG Consulting and the expertise that's been shared by many superintendents that have been spoken with, securing candidates for this search will be much more fruitful if we are able to keep the names confidential prior to a finalist being named. And this is because qualified sitting superintendents would prefer to reveal the details about their candidacy once they are actually selected as the finalists. So the board has listened to community and stakeholder feedback, and we have incorporated that into what we've heard, and that's been put into the leadership profile. Using that profile as a guide, the board will then conduct the interviews that I mentioned before with candidates and make the final selection for the next superintendent of KCPS. In order to honor what, one of our biggest responsibilities in this role, which is to hire the superintendent, the board feels that this is the path forward that will yield the best candidate pool and therefore the best superintendent. The website, again, that you can find all of these updates that I just shared
Thank you very much. Any questions? Ms. Cortez, I'm sorry I cut you off before you got to give your committee report.
Not a problem. I know everybody's just waiting on the edge of their seat for the Finance Committee report. Just a few quick notes, one of which is that we really are, are working hard in the Finance Committee with the, with the support and leadership of the executive team, particularly Ms. Thompson and Ms. Soriana McCrery, to think about how we better communicate with the public about our budget process and our budget timelines. So you'll be seeing increased communications around that as we progress through the course of this year. The budget timelines for fiscal year '24 were also reviewed, and we will, as we traditionally do, have our public hearing in early May related to the proposed budget. The budget process starts now and progresses into a form that allows for public feedback at that time. So that's what I have to say.
Thanks for that update. I will provide an update regarding the Government Relations Committee. And one more plug, we are going to be headed to Jefferson City on January 31st for our Parent Day of Action with, in conjunction with the St. Louis Public Schools. We'll be taking a charter bus down there. There is still room, which is why I'm plugging it again. We will, our, our purpose is to actually demystify the process for parents, so they'll get a view of what a committee hearing looks like. They will get to, they'll be introduced on the House floor. We'll have meetings with various legislators, and then we will end the day with a rally with our parents from St. Louis Public Schools. So really, we did have an advocacy training last night. We recorded it, so that for those of you that maybe are still interested, but you weren't able to attend, we would absolutely share that with you. And for those folks who are really comfortable sharing their story, that's really what we want you to be able to do, is learn to use your voice on behalf of your students and your schools down in Jefferson City, maybe even here locally. So that is the 31st. We also have, this is in the role of, we have another, as you remember, Mr. Abarca had to vacate his seat. He resigned at the beginning of the year, and that is Sub-District 3. Thank you, June. And so we will be holding a, an election for that in June. What's the date? June 20th. And the filing for that begins February 21st. And so for those that might be interested in filing for that seat, we will be conducting an abbreviated, what we call School Board School, on February 4th, beginning at 9:30 a.m., going to about 12 at the Kansas City Public Library, the Northeast Branch. And in that session, you'll hear a little bit about the system overview of the Kansas City Public Schools and the ed landscape within which we sit. We'll also go over some of the rules and requirements for fire, filing. And then also, you will have a little opportunity to ask questions of current sitting board members, so some Q and A. So I just want to give another plug for that. I don't wear these out in the front. So there was a flyer, both in English and Spanish, also on the front table out there. Great, thank you. And so I believe that concludes the Board of Directors' report. And at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to interim Superintendent Dr. Collier.
Thank you, Board Vice Chair Wolfsee, Board Community. At this time, we're going to start the Superintendent's Report this evening with a video, and many of you may know, but this is, January is Board Appreciation Month, as well as National Mentoring Month. So we're going to start off this evening with a video acknowledging our board. We typically, every year, do something during the week of Board Appreciation Week, and we will do that. But we wanted to acknowledge our board this evening during this month, and then later, we're going to acknowledge our mentoring efforts as well. So we're ready for the video.
We are honored to have dedicated and passionate individuals serving on our school board. They play a vital role in shaping the future of our students, our schools, and our community. Our board members are volunteers who are elected by the community to serve and lead the school district. They make important decisions that affect the education of our students, and they are responsible for the district policies and budget. They spend countless hours attending meetings, listening to public input, and making difficult decisions for the betterment of our schools. Their hard work and dedication to our students is truly admirable. But our school members do more than just attend meetings. They are also active members of our community, attending school events, and showing their support for our students and teachers. Their role is important to the success of our students, and we are grateful for the time and energy they put into making our school district a better place. Thank you, school board members, for your unwavering commitment to our students and our community. Your dedication is truly appreciated.
We know being a board member is a tireless job, it's a lot of work, a lot of hours, and probably not as much thanks as, as deserved. And so we just want to say thank you all this evening for your service and your leadership as board members of Kansas City Public Schools. At this time, I'm going to call up our folks who will be leading our mentoring update, and that is Marquise Hall, our Manager of Student Diversity and Inclusion Programs, and Maddy Cersey, Mentoring Program Coordinator. And they're going to give us an update around our mentoring program.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Collier. Good evening, Vice Chair Wolfsee, Dr. Collier, and members of the board. My name is Marquise Hall, and I'm the Manager of Student Diversity and Inclusion Programs. And Maddy Cersey is the Mentoring Program Coordinator, and we will provide you with the mentoring program update this evening. So, let's start with a roadmap for student growth and success. What we know is that relationships do matter. There's an emphasis on helping individuals grow and accomplishing their goals. That's what relationships do. And we know that when we have trusting adults in front of our kids, they're role models, they provide support, academic and career development as well. And then we know that schools cannot do this alone. So we have to make sure that we are leveraging our partners to make sure that our students get what exactly that they need. And then we are definitely aligned to our strategic plan, which I'll talk more about in the next slide. As you can see here, mentoring is all over, all over the strategic plan, but I'm going to highlight Pillar B. The first one is safety nets. Safety nets ensure that kids don't fall through the cracks and that there's a cushion for our students to soften the impact. There's also family and community engagement. We know that when students get involved in the mentoring program, they all, all of their parents and guardians sign a permission slip in order for them to get there. And families are notified when matches do occur. And families have the ability to communicate with their mentors. And then, when we think about community partnerships, this enables us to serve more students. As we think about our history and previous context, we know that one in three young people are growing up without a mentor. We call that the mentoring gap in America. And when our program was launched, it was launched in an effort to continue, to help close the mentoring gap, not only in America, but in KCPS. And then, when we think about the, our portfolio of KCPS programs, we have Lunch Buddies, Success Mentors, Career Mentors, and our RISE program, or Reaching Individual Success in Education. The Lunch Buddies program is really unique, because it provides mentors with an opportunity to not do exactly formal mentorship, but to be a friend to our kids. That's what our elementary schoolers are looking for, just to nourish that sense of belonging. And then we, when we think about our Success Mentors program, that's an attendance-based initiative. We want to make sure that all of our kids are meeting at 90/90 and are coming to school regularly. When we think about our Career Mentors program, we want our kids to be able to pursue post-secondary opportunities, so those mentors make sure that they're talking with our children about opportunities that they could have after they leave KCPS. And our RISE program, which is my baby, of course. Our RISE program is in our high schools, and it, it definitely prepares our students to have post-secondary opportunities, but also, our RISE mentors make sure that our students are okay socially and emotionally. And then, when we think about our goals for the mentoring program, one of our biggest goals is also to increase the number of students that are participating in the mentoring program. So we wanted to increase it from 1,259 to 1,600 students this year. I'll talk a little bit more about the successes later on that. Then, we also wanted to increase the number of internal mentors from 138 to 200. And then, we want to continue to add students to the pool so that there is a list of students ready to be matched. And then we want to increase opportunities for mentors to engage and network with one another. Here are key performance indicators for our RISE program. We are, we are closely monitoring their attendance, behavior, and course performance. And then, as we think about the internal mentors, we're tracking the number of mentors that we are, that are in front of our children, that are our own people, but also making sure we're also looking at, like, what schools have the highest numbers and things like that. And then the last thing is our annual feedback from mentoring stakeholders. When we talk about stakeholders, we're talking about our students, our partners, and also our mentors. We want to make sure that we're able to pivot and make adjustments as needed, and when we get feedback from our stakeholders, this helps us plan from, from year to year. As we think, this slide right here shows you our current status. To be honest, we cannot do this without the work of our partners. So this shows you what we're doing as far as mentoring is concerned, and this is our breakdown right here. As you can see, we are serving 1,977 students in a mentoring program. That's fantastic. Here is our current status slide. One of the things that I want to highlight is that there are lots of organizations that are supporting the work that we're doing. We know that mentoring is not a one-size-fits-all approach, so we have different programs that make sure kids can get exactly what they need. And then, we have 448 one-to-one matches, and this is up from last year. Last year, at this time, we had 358. So we're looking at almost 100 more matches this time as compared to last year. And then, another really unique thing is that we provide, well, I'm sorry, we have site coordinators at every building. And the important role of a site coordinator is that they carry our shared vision for mentoring. So what they, what we do is we provide them with professional development to make sure that they provide excellent customer service to all of our mentors, and to ensure that effective mentoring practices... and to ensure that effective mentoring practices are taking place at the school level. Okay, and with that being said, I would like to invite Maddy Cersei up to the podium.
Thank you, Marquise. My name's Maddy Cersei, I'm the Mentoring Program Coordinator. Thank you so much for having me. It's my first board meeting, so it's very exciting. I'm going to continue talking about the current status of our mentoring program. The first thing I'll touch on is the fact that we are continuing to hold monthly trainings for respective mentors. These are held both in-person and virtually every month. In these trainings, we cover things like growth mindset, trauma-informed care, as well as giving our mentors some information about the district as far as the families we serve and the students they'll be working with. We are actively participating in mentor recognition and providing some meaningful programming for our mentors and mentees to participate in. As we've all mentioned multiple times, this month, January, is National Mentoring Month. And in recognition of this very exciting monumental event, we are actually providing a service project for all of our mentors and mentees to participate in. This year, we have partnered with an organization called Cards for Hospitalized Kids, and our mentors and mentees are invited to create cards that give hope and encouragement to students, to kids that will be distributed across the nation, to children's hospitals, and Ronald McDonald houses. The cards are super cute, I've already received some of them, so. As far as mentor recognition, we really strive to do this all the time, but this month especially, you may have noticed on our social media, we're featuring mentors and mentees across our schools of all ages, all backgrounds. And it's been some really great feedback we've received from our mentors as far as why they mentor and what brings them to KCPS. There we go, sorry, I didn't click it hard enough. Current status continued. The next slide covers some of the feedback we've received from our mentors and our mentees. This was collected at the end of last school year, so May 2022. Our mentors all indicated that 90% felt that they were able to establish a personal connection with their mentee. 83% felt that they made a positive difference in their mentee's life. Our mentees responded that 95% of our K-5 graders responded that they felt like their mentor made them feel special, which really shows the sense of belonging and connection to community that this program gives our students in the elementary ages. And last, I'm going to cover the match process that our mentors and mentees go through. So, like I mentioned before, all of our mentors go through training. Once that training is complete, we ask them to complete a profile in our database. And in, from that, a background check is completed, and we check references that they provide. Once all of that information is through the door and processed, they are also asked to provide what school they prefer to mentor at. This gives them the, allows them to identify a school that might be close to their home, or close to their school, or close to their work, so they're easily able to get there. They also indicate what time of day they'd like they're available. From that, we use that information and connect them with a student at their school site and meet, match them at a time where they are able to meet at that school. The official match letter is sent via email. And from that, we ask that every mentor responds, "Yes, I have received this information, and yes, I'm able to meet at this designated time." And from that, they begin their mentoring relationship and are connected with the site coordinator, who continues to give them that onboarding experience and make them feel welcome to their new mentoring school site. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to take you through some of our successes. This slide right here talks a lot about our successes as far as attendance is concerned. As you can see from the chart here, 69% of our 9th graders have improved attendance as compared to 59% of students without a mentor. And then you can also see students in our Lunch Buddies program, 70% of them have improved attendance as compared to the students who are not a Lunch Buddy. And then, I really want to highlight this 9th grade year. We know 9th grade has its fair share of challenges. You know, there's more academic demands, there's changes in school environment, there's a larger school environment in many cases, too. So, making sure that our students are coming to school regularly, and as frequently as possible, and meeting that 90/90 is really, really big for us. And we know with mentors, that occurs at a higher rate. Some more of our successes include increasing the number of internal mentors. So far, we have increased the number of internal mentors by 34%. We are not done yet, because we still want more of the people that work for KCPS to continue to mentor students. In addition to that, the students who are in the Career Mentors program, who take an advanced class, they have it on average 13.3% higher than their peers. And we know that when students take career, take more advanced classes, that it prepares them for college or more rigorous work. They can earn college credit, and in many cases, it can save them some money. And we want that. So, our mentors are actively having conversations with our 10th through 12th graders in the Career Mentors program. And then, the last thing I want to highlight is that the number of new matches has increased from 202 to 258 since this time last year. And this demonstrates our ongoing recruitment efforts to get more mentors in. Future planning, this is really important. So, we want to continue to grow the number of internal mentors for KCPS, and we will continue to do that. And then, we want to make sure that we recruit community organizations to work with sub-populations. We want mentors that can work with students with disabilities and English language learners. In particular, there's been a really big need right now for Spanish-speaking mentors to serve our students whose primary language is Spanish. And then, we also want to make sure that we are partnering with individual schools to make mentoring a strategic priority in their building. We've done this with many of our schools, and it's worked out really, really well. We want to continue to do that and grow that base. So here's our timeline. One of the biggest things is that we need to develop and create a social media and engagement plan. To be honest, Mentoring Month is great, and it's a good time to highlight the work we're doing, but we could actually be doing this the full year. And we need to take advantage of those opportunities. So we've got to create a more robust social media plan. And then the other thing I want to highlight is creating a mentoring newsletter. I think this is important because it gives us a chance to share information about our program, and it's also a really great recruitment strategy, too, because you can share it out with other people. I would like to say that we don't have any barriers, but we do have some barriers. In all honesty, the demand is really high, and we don't have enough mentors. We have 800 students that are waiting for a mentor. In addition to that, there's a lot of misconceptions about mentoring. People think that they won't have a great impact, or that they don't have the time to mentor. Well, in all honesty, all you have to do is commit 30 minutes a week. And then, the last thing is, we want to make sure that we're recruiting for specificity. So again, we want mentors who speak another language, and mentors who have a strong desire to work with students with disabilities. So this is my call to action. We have heard all of the information presented tonight. KCPS currently has 800 students looking for caring adults to mentor them. We know that we cannot embark on this endeavor alone, and we need the help and support from each and every one of you in this room, online, and in the community. It doesn't take much to be a mentor, except the love for children, willingness to show up as you are, and be able to learn, laugh, and grow with them. KCPS asks that mentors meet with mentees for 30 minutes a week during school to share experiences that will last a lifetime. You don't have to, you don't have to have a certain title or degree to be considered an expert, or anything to be a mentor. Our kids are looking for someone to show up, root for them, and be champions for them. I firmly believe that every child deserves a champion. Will you be that champion for our children? Before I end, the children have created a flip video. And what they've, and what they've done is they've helped us try to recruit more mentors. So I would like to show the video that our students created, because they're, they're asking for your help, too.
Kansas City Public Schools celebrates National Mentoring Month. This is a time when we focus our attention on the importance of mentoring and the positive impact it can have on young lives. At KCPS, we take mentoring seriously. We believe that every young person deserves a mentor who can guide, support, and inspire them. That's why we take the time to celebrate mentoring throughout the month of January with a variety of activities for both mentors and mentees. One of our most popular activities is our district-wide flip video competition. This year, our mentees created videos that not only encouraged adults in the KC Metro area to become mentors, but also highlighted the impact that mentoring has had on their own lives.
Hey y'all, my name is Shaila. I'm here because I want to encourage all kind adults to come work here as a KCPS mentor. My mentor has helped me have a better positive attitude and to be respectful. Thank you for listening, and I hope you sign up.
My mentor is Mr. Taylor. And what, what we do is we spend time together. All he do is talk about to be successful in life. Having a mentor has helped me because I learned to be successful, happy, and great. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for being my mentor. I hope all caring adults should be a mentor in my school.
When I see my mentor, I just think of like, this is like a friend that helps, because it's a lot of, it's, yeah, just a friend that helps, to be honest. Me, when me and my mentor meet here, we talk about like how I am with grades, like where I'm at with work and grade and stuff. We also talk about like nursing, like nursing school and like pre-med and stuff, because she's in the doctor field, and that's what I want to do.
Hi, my name is Sophie. I'm here because I want to encourage all caring adults to become mentors for KCPS students. My mentor, Ms. Martinez, has taught me so many things. I love spending time with my mentor because I have been able to express myself with her. When we get together, I love being able to fill each other in about our lives. Having a mentor has helped me become a better student.
My mentor's name is Mr. Adams, and he taught me a lot about how the real world works and ways to prepare for it. He also taught me about how to keep my grades up by persisting, continuing my education, and continuing my good choices. That keep-presisting lesson helped keep my grades and confidence up, and I absolutely have to thank him for it. On top of all that, when we meet, I always look forward to connecting, talking about random things, and how he always asks about how and what I've been doing. And that shows that he cares about me.
I love spending time with my mentor because I have been able to learn new things. When we talk, get together, I love being able to talk.
What I like about Ms. Timbo is like she's a positive, caring mentor. She always keep me in a positive mood, she uplift my spirits. She always give me good advice. Like Ms. Timbo, she taught me to stay confident, like never give up. She reminds me to think positive in order to stay positive.
I am here because I want to encourage more caring adults to become mentors. Hope you all enjoy this video, and everybody sign up to be a mentor.
Another way we honor mentoring is by participating in the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. Our mentees did this by creating cards for hospitalized children. We also take the time to show appreciation for our amazing mentors. This year, we will be coming together for a special pizza party to laugh, network, and share the benefits of mentoring. Mentoring is more than just showing up. It's about setting expectations and being a supportive friend to someone who needs it. We hope that you are inspired to become a mentor and make a difference in a young person's life. For more information about our mentoring program, please visit us at kcpublicschools.org/mentoring.
Sign up to be a mentor.
So if I wasn't convincing enough, surely our babies were, right? If you are interested in becoming a mentor, we have a signup sheet out there. You are more than welcome to sign up, or you can scan the QR code that's on the screen and register for a training. Additionally, for our board members, there was a board packet that was distributed to you that highlighted the social media posts and all the other things that we did during National Mentoring Month. Oh, should be a question slide. Thank you, questions?
Just want to say you did a great job of anticipating all the questions, because each note got answered on the next page, so. Is 30 minutes optimal? Or are there longer periods, like what's, what's the optimal commitment of a mentor?
Yeah, so we ask our mentors to commit to three to four times a month, which is almost weekly, for 30 minutes. We don't want to interrupt instruction too, too much. So 30 minutes for a school-based mentoring program is normal.
I had a question about students serving as mentors. I don't know if that's something that you guys have explored, but I know that we have high schoolers who have a lot to share with younger students who also need, what are those, service learning hours as well? So I don't know if that was something that your group had ever thought about.
We, we have actually not talked about that a whole lot, but that's something that we can bring up in our, in our meetings together.
Don't do it just because I ask. I was just curious if, because there may be some logistics and whatnot. But I do know that, at least as far as the city year program, near-peer reaction a lot of times between students when they're closer to their age, they tend to pay more attention to what they're saying.
I agree, worthwhile.
We do have some peer mentoring models like that, especially for those high school students who are looking to achieve their A-plus hours. And so we have some back and forth between Paseo and King Elementary. We've tried that in, in previous years as well. And so we're continuing to monitor that to see how we can replicate success.
Yeah, it's funny that when you said that, it dawned on me that another great benefit to that is also just students maybe interacting and seeing the peers that where they may matriculate to also might be helpful, so.
Thank you for the presentation, I think those are all the questions.
Thank you.
All right. That's nice, a round of applause, yeah. And that is really meaningful work. And later on, you will be reminded of that call to action, and that is a great place to get involved and to really support our students. It's really important that our students have caring adults that are present and connected with them. And so, if you're available, if you're interested, and even spread the word to others, we'd love to have you come and to support our students as a mentor. At this time, we will move to our Blueprint 2030 Revised Recommendation Review. And I'm going to ask Jesse Lang if he will come now, and he's going to lead us through this. It's going to be a pretty brief presentation. We're not going to go through all the slides we've done before, but it's just a quick highlight of what we've covered. And so I'm going to turn over now to Jesse, thank you.
All right, good evening to the Board of Directors and to interim superintendent Dr. Jennifer Collier and the Kansas City community. I'm going to provide a brief review of the Revised Blueprint 2030 recommendations. Just as a reminder, Blueprint 2030 is serving as an update to the district's strategic plan. We are in year five of our existing strategic plan, and so we need to update that. That's incredibly important when we talk about maintaining accreditation for this district, because we have to report out to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education our progress on how we are adhering to our own strategic plan. So as part of that plan, we are recommending a new mission statement, as well as goals for 2025 and 2030. Along with each one of those goals, there are associated strategies to help us to achieve those goals in the future. All of that comprises that academic vision. In addition to these academic pieces, there are some facility components as well. Part of the components that have been getting a lot of attention, including the closure of two elementary schools at the conclusion of this school year. Those two schools are Truce Elementary and Longfellow Elementary. No other schools are designated for closure at this time as a part of the Blueprint 2030 recommendation. This recommendation does include a call for action to the community, which we will review, as well as the intent for the district to pursue a geo-bond in the spring of 2024. The proposed new mission statement is on the slide in front of you. The current statement is over a decade old, and the language reflects the time when it was created. The new statement is "Upholding the Promise of an Equitable Educational Experience, So Kansas City Students Thrive Socially, Emotionally, and Academically." emotionally, and academically." In addition to this mission statement, there are four commitments to Kansas City. So again, this is the update to the strategic plan. So you probably remember on our existing plan, um that image of the circle, they just had it in the mentoring um slide deck of the four different colors. So previously, we talked about four pillars. This is rebranding this as four commitments, again tying it back to upholding the promise, so that's why these are commitments in these four different areas. So this is how we're organizing the work of this large school district. So in these areas of learning, support, people, and system. And so all of the goals and strategies then are organized around these four different areas that we have to excel in. Components of the academic plan that will be implemented um with this recommendation, you can see on the left-hand side, you have um some of our um things that are included, including those literacy strategies, uh mass focus, and the coachly responsive teaching, um as well as those reading and math endorsements that are currently taking place, as well as college and career pathways. We do have some elements on there that will be implemented as a result of the closure of the two schools that we're talking about. Um, those things include the instrumental music for elementary grades four through six. So um we've shared that information previously. Not only is this to increase the student experience, but it's also tied directly to student performance. We've seen research that ties um instrumental music to to that having those um impact on student performance as well. Um, other things that would be included in there is maintaining our math and reading interventionists. We shared last time that we have, we want to maintain the same number of FTEs that we currently have. We're currently paying for that out of ESAR dollars for a portion of that, and we want that to continue past the time period when ESAR dollars will expire. So we want to maintain the level for math and reading and other academic interventionists. Um, other things that would be directly related to this recommendation is beyond the four walls. Those are our field trips that we are wanting for all students um at all schools to make sure that they have those experiences outside of their classroom that are tied back to curriculum that they can see um the real application of, as well as foreign language expansion for our secondary schools. Part of this process to be um successful, we know we have to have strong transition teams. So um the goal of the transition teams to ensure that everyone who's impacted, whether it be students, families, uh staff, they're welcomed in their new school, and they're encouraged to stay within KCPS. We want this to be a positive experience uh for everyone. So within those transition teams, we have um folks from central office, school staff, parents, students, who can join uh to be a part of that. We will have the ability at the school level to have folks sign up for transition teams if they would like to be a part of one. Um, in addition, of course, KCPS will work with all the impacted families to ensure that they find the best KCPS option for their student. In addition, we know that more education and engagement is required from our community. Um, one thing that Dr. Collier went over in our last board meeting is this engagement model. So we are wanting to form a large task force that will then break into six smaller committees um based around these critical areas. So academic and student performance, safety, enrollment and marketing, the educational landscape in Kansas City, economic development, and the bond. So we know there might be some people who have interests in one of those areas, one or more of those areas. Uh, they also might have expertise that they could lend the district in one of those places. So we want to open the opportunity for them to join one of those committees. In addition to um that work, we have the general call to action that we would like to ask of the Kansas City community. What can you do to support your school district? Well, one thing you can do is to participate on one of those committees that we just went through, uh participate in the bond engagement process. If we have that end goal of pursuing a bond in 2024, there's a lot of things that have to happen between now and 2024, so folks can be a part of that process. Um, in addition, there's lots of other things that that people can do. Just thinking back to public meetings, um if folks have a school-age student that lives within the district, send your child to a KCPS school that supports the district. Ensure that your child gets there every single day and is ready to learn. Um, if you do not have children within the district, there's also lots of ways that you can support us, and this was not planned to be the same night as the mentoring presentation, but that actually worked out perfectly because that's such an awesome opportunity. Uh, one thing that we've talked about with our schools, we have suffered in many areas from declining enrollment and low attendance rates. That's directly related to the funding that schools um are able to receive. So if folks would like to support a school, support a student. That's a way to do that. The Success Mentor Program is specifically tailored to improve students' attendance rates. Um, it's an awesome program. I know firsthand, I started with a fourth grader at Gladstone, and he's already a sophomore at Northeast High School uh because time flies really quickly. But it's an opportunity for adults to be advocates for students um to ensure that they get to class, and it's a way that we can support our schools. You can also volunteer to be a reader or a volunteer in some other way. Now, before I pause for some questions, um I will turn it over to Dr. Collier for some remarks, and then we can wait for questions for me or the rest of the team.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. I appreciate the presentation. Um, in summary, I just want to acknowledge uh first of all, the hard work of Jesse Lang, um our leadership team, and all the KCPS staff that have poured a tremendous number of hours into reviewing data, into gathering feedback, um preparing presentations and information over the course of the last six months. I also want to acknowledge our board, um who have been amazing thought partners in this process and champions for our students. They too have given many hours to engage in critical conversations around this Blueprint 2030 long-range planning for KCPS. I want to acknowledge all the members of our community, so many of you who've joined us in numerous engagement sessions to provide meaningful and constructive feedback that has helped us reach this revised recommendation. Ultimately, I believe that everyone involved, regardless of what position you hold, wants what is best for the students here in KCPS. As we move toward a final decision on this Blueprint 2030 proposal, I want to call us back to the original um purpose or primary objectives of the Blueprint 2030 plan. It is to improve student achievement and to enhance the overall student experience. And while much of the conversation over the last few months has centered on facilities, this really has never been a facility plan. Instead, it is an academic vision that is designed to address our need to realize greater academic achievement and student growth across our school district. The revised recommendation that was presented on January eleventh and that has been reviewed this evening, I believe will be an initial step toward realizing the intended outcomes of that vision. I also want to acknowledge and thank the hardworking and the dedicated staff of two of our schools, and that's Truce Elementary and Longfellow Elementary. I also want to acknowledge the committed parents who partner with our schools and the staff every day to ensure the student's success. Um, I think it's important that I state that this recommendation is not an indication of the value and the importance of our students, staff, and families in those schools. Those folks are important to the KCPS community and family, and I want to say thank you to all the work of the staff, all the commitment of the parents, and just to acknowledge the amazing students that we have in those buildings. Regardless of the decision that is made tonight, I believe our community is poised to further accelerate KCPS and to make it the student-centered, future-ready, premier school district of choice that we all know that we can be. I'm confident that together, we can bring this vision to fruition as we rally around our students in this school district with the commitment and the resolve to move forward together. Our success lies within our ability to engage and move through this process together. At this time, I will turn things over to our board vice chair and the board, and once again, I want to say thank you to our community um and all stakeholders who have been involved in this process. Thank you for lending your voice. Thank you for hanging in there throughout this process. And I also want to encourage you that no matter what decision is made this evening, I want to restate, we need you. We need you to stay engaged. We need you to stay committed um to KCPS and our students, and as we move into education and engagement, whatever that will look like moving forward, we want you to be there. We want you to have a voice in um this this new iteration of who we are as KCPS. We want you to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Collier. I think at this point, we will move on to our regular business items, that part of our meeting. As uh Dr. Collier just uh presented, there is a, she has recommended the uh Revised Blueprint 2030 Plan as presented to the Board of Directors on January eleventh, 2023. Um, at this moment, or at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt her recommendation for the approval of the recommendation of the interim superintendent.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. At this moment, what I'd like to do is have a chance for the board to ask questions and make comments as it relates to the um recommendation from the superintendent, and I think it might be easiest if we go left to right, if that's okay. I'm going to start with you, Ms. Ford, and then we'll go down here, and then we'll end with the board chair, um Hogan, who is still, um, well, there he is, right there.
All right, so um I wrote down some statements that I want to to read instead of just rambling. I wanted to start off again, as I shared in the last meeting, with just more praise to you, Dr. Collier, and the team, and how you have navigated the last few months. I know it has been extremely challenging. Uh, I appreciate how you have taken feedback, that you have received and balanced that with your expertise and what you believe uh truly to be best for the district. This is a very tough spot to be in as a district and a community. Uh, I, so many parts of me are deeply saddened by where we sit, and I wish that we did not have to make the decision that we are making right now. And I believe the decision before us is so much more actually than a strategic planning conversation. As a board member, I've been grappling with the weight of this moment and how the decisions of today will be felt today and also into the future. It is not, it is also not lost on me that the recommendations to date have not directly impacted my children in any way and their schools they attend, and honestly, uh the children of any of my colleagues actually as well. From a governance, fiscal, and purely logical standpoint, I understand the facts. The building condition, the maintenance costs, the enrollment, the academic performance over time, I understand why those variables were considered as part of the recommendations. I also believe that our district and our system overall has too many schools than we have students, and we do need to make some very difficult decisions. With my top strength being empathy, I feel deeply and I understand the emotional component and the humanity with people on the other side of the facts that are written on paper. I am mindful of disruption and even harm that can occur with school closures. So I've wrestled back and forth in my mind these last few months trying to balance all of this. I attended many of the town halls and have had the opportunity to hear many perspectives, uh parents and teachers and staff at Longfellow, at Truce, and many of the other schools in in our community as well. I want to make it clear that I do not take this decision lightly, and I have centered the best piece of advice that I received from a former district administrator who simply shared that adults have to do what's in the best interest of our kids. They are the north star in this conversation. Dr. Collier, during my time on the board, I have known you to be a person that truly centers kids in your decision-making. I don't believe that you will present a plan that you did not believe in, or that was not thoughtful or considerate of all the variables. Leadership does come with making difficult decisions, and you have been charged with making the best decision with what we have before us. I believe the revised recommendations, though not perfect by any means, do work to balance our financial stewardship with the desire to improve academic outcomes for kids across our schools, while also incorporating much of what we have heard from our community and our stakeholders. I believe it aims for consistency across the district instead of just pockets of good at isolated schools. It also sets a plan in motion for continued, more authentic, true engagement and collaboration for many of the other looming uh decisions that we have before us, and even allows for some opportunity to build greater consensus. I support the recommendations that include the creation of committees and task force that will help us move forward together with purpose and direction as a district and community, and to the creation of academic uh goals that I haven't seen laid out in the way that they have been now. I'm also in support of enrollment targets and providing resources for our schools and our community to work together to achieve those metrics while also solidifying a plan to pursue a bond in 2024. As one of the board members who will remain on this board through the implementation of this plan, I want to just reiterate again that this is what has been a very difficult decision that I do not take lightly. Um, and I want to say thank you for all who have engaged over the last several months, provided your thoughts, your pushback. It was encouraging to see a renewed interest, um and excitement for Kansas City Public Schools. My hope is that um in that all of this, we will, all of that engagement will continue beyond tonight. There is truly a need for us to have a larger systemic collaborative conversation around what schools we need, and I'm not talking about the us versus them conversation, but really thoughtful and collaborative conversations about our system. And we will need that support in the future as well, engaging in those conversations. So I do look forward uh to moving forward together as a district, a system, and a community that does center our children always, and is we and ours, and not consistently me and mine. So I will be moving forward in supporting your recommendation, Dr. Collier.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Uh, Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Uh, my colleague has taken all the talking points, so I would just say I would appreciate again the administration and all that they've done to make this difficult decision. Um, and I just would like to echo the idea that we all continue to realize that investment um in our students, in our communities, is upon all of us. Um, with this decision that we're making today, it is, I see it as an investment into the future of our children here, and it is on all of us to continue that investment through our time, our energy, our mentorship, but also supporting in very tangible ways, to Jesse, to Mr. Lang's point, um of supporting the school district. Do we, how do we get involved? If you feel like the school that is available to you is not where, at the standard you want it to be, how do we become a part of that community and support it? Um, and from within, move the needle to where we want it to be. That is possible. That's how any school that has ever become better, has ever gotten better, from the inside, um from parents who choose to be advocates and supporters in their role. That is what investment looks like. So I appreciate the efforts today to further invest in our community and in our students.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Um, this is the benefit of serving with amazing people. Then I echo what has already been said. I do have some prepared uh statements that I wanted to share. Also, thank you to you, Dr. Collier, and your administration for the work from basically 2019 until today. Thank you to the school communities of students, families, alumni, teachers, staff, and building leadership for continuing to stay engaged throughout this entire process. And another thank you to all the KCPS partners, be they education, business, civic, and philanthropic, for taking the time to lend your voice to this process. Everyone's time and attention is very much appreciated and necessary for the board to reach its vote. For me, this is the third time that I've actually participated in one of these processes. The first two were as a parent, and this is my first time as a board member. What I can say is there is never a point in time when you feel you have enough information and are ready to make this very difficult decision. But as board members, it is our responsibility, as Ms. Ford pointed out, to take into account the data, the feedback, and then weigh the individual needs of our students, staff, and families in the context of our fiduciary responsibilities to the overall school district. I believe Dr. Collier and her team have listened to the feedback, performed additional financial analysis, and have put forward a revised recommendation that takes into account the district's ability to execute with a high degree of success while minimizing negative community impact. However, this recommendation, if adopted, will not eliminate the need for difficult discussions regarding the current public education landscape in Kansas City and the real financial financial strain KCPS faces. The moving forward together effort put forth in the recommendation is how KCPS will seek to educate the community about these challenges while leading an effort to solve them collectively. It's my hope that the community I've seen coming forward the last few months will continue to stay to stay engaged and committed to the proposed process, because schools are a key component of a strong and thriving neighborhood, and residents see their schools as part of the stability of their communities. And frankly, we need you if we're ultimately going to be able to deliver on the promise of the rich opportunities all of our students deserve. Ms. Cortez, would you like to go next?
I feel like I should say ditto, so I apologize for the repetition that you'll hear as well. I think each of us, the fact that the comments are as they are, reflect that there's been a lot of serious consideration and work from each of my colleagues. I do want to open, however, by expressing my appreciation for our interim superintendent, Dr. Collier, and your KCPS team for leading this phase of the strategic planning process in an authentic and responsive manner. Community engagement remains a work in process for KCPS, and this phase reflects a renewed commitment to engaging, listening, and responding to the core concerns of our community. I also want to take the opportunity to thank our parents, faculty, students, staff, alumni, and community members who care about our kids and their education for engaging with us in this process. Regardless of tonight's vote, we need, I think I repeat now for about the fifth time, we need your continued participation, work with us, to get to the best outcomes for our kids and the adults who serve and support them. Thank you to all of my colleagues for their engagement, for wrestling with very challenging questions and decisions, and for the care and concern about what really helps our kids learn and grow. A few acknowledgements. We've heard criticism for engaging in this stage of Blueprint 2030 process under the leadership of an interim superintendent, for announcing plans in a manner seen as abrupt, for being too aggressive, for not being aggressive enough, and that list could go on for quite a while tonight. Each criticism is valid in its own way and reflects the challenges that KCPS has in conveying the complexities of the situation and of our future. But continuity matters. The actions that we take tonight, tomorrow, and each day impact the manner in which we will be able to educate and support our kids in the future. In the end, I believe it is incumbent upon us, the elected board, to take the steps we believe necessary to ensure the best possible opportunity for our kids to be better resourced in their classrooms and school buildings, to learn and grow at a pace equal to or better than their peers in Kansas City, in the metro area, and across the state. When we look at our resources, our enrollment trends, the demographic trends within our district boundaries, and the future forecasts, it is imperative that we take strategic steps to focus our resources on classrooms and kids rather than band-aiding aging infrastructure and spreading our kids and talented staff and teachers across an excess of sites. I know, we know, that further consolidation will be necessary, dependent on a number of factors, some of which we control and influence and some of which we do not. An example of these factors are enrollment trends, improvement in both student retention and student recruitment, passage of a general obligation bond to support a first phase of facility improvement, retention and recruitment of high-quality faculty, staff, and building leaders, changes in state legislation, addition of new charter schools or charter seats to an already saturated, publicly-funded system of schools. Those are just a few of the factors that we'll have to keep on our radar as we move forward with this plan. Absent positive action in many of these categories, we are likely to be back having these same conversations in just a few. Each of us has distinct opinions about how far we should go in this first phase of consolidation. I find the proposed plan thoughtful, responsive, and measured in its approach, giving our KCPS team the opportunity to demonstrate that we can work with and support every kid, every family, and every impacted KCPS staff and teachers in the transition process. I believe we could have gone further in this first step based on our overarching responsibility, but I am unwilling to let perfect be the enemy of good. As unpleasant as it is, we bear the responsibility to take a meaningful first step toward a healthier system of schools that drive higher student achievement while supporting students and their families in every reasonable way possible. Deferring these decisions does not eliminate the factors we face. It just leaves the issues for the next board and the next administration to deal with in a manner likely to create more harm in the community than this measured and reasonable approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. Ms. Buckner?
Oh, so whenever I make a decision like this, of this magnitude, I absolutely have to do so with a whole lot of confidence. Dr. Collier, I respect you and your team, and I trust that the new recommendation brought forward was thoughtful and a result of your care for this district and your incredible expertise. With that said, I cannot go without saying that I cannot, with good conscience, vote to close a school that is doing exactly what we want them to do: increase in increasing achievement and increasing enrollment. What can be a potential model for the district is in jeopardy of being disrupted. I believe we should find a way to keep the students, teachers, and families together. I think it is worth the complexity, the money, and the effort. I know that closing schools is a reality we need to face, but I do believe we have put the cart before the horse. I applaud you, Dr. Collier, for the proposed task force and the committees, and I believe this to be the type of engagement that should inform school closings and transition plans. It is my hope that moving forward, we can invest in more collaborative processes such as this. I just encourage you to keep leaning in. I really appreciate the community for utilizing your voice, for showing up, and no matter the outcome tonight, I'm proud of this board and this team, and I know that everybody has KCPS kids in their best interest.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Mr. Hogan, I see you on there. Would you like to go ahead?
Yeah. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start. I do have some prepared remarks, but I want to start by just a bit of a reflection of how humbled I am to be part of a group of people that just spoke. This experience of being on an elected board like this, where no decision is easy, I mean, not a single one, they all flow down to our kids, and so there's not a single easy decision that happens as a school board member. And as someone said earlier, it's oftentimes a thankless job, but what I say is, you know, the only thanks I really need is from our students. At the end of the day, that's who I'm here to advocate for and work on behalf of. But hearing the thoughtfulness that went into this decision for each board member, your comments, and how we, I think we've all wrestled and gone back and forth in one way or another over the last, you know, three years since the beginning of this. I, however, arrived at a bit of a different place, and I want to be clear, because I don't want anyone to take any of my comments out of context. None of this has to do with my respect for Dr. Collier and her leadership. As someone said earlier, she stepped into one of the most difficult jobs in this country, having to make one of the most difficult decisions in a role that's already incredibly complex and challenging. So I'll just read my comments here, and then we can sort of move forward. In 2019, when the district, in collaboration with the board, began working on Blueprint 2030, its promise was evident. Rarely do public school districts take the bold position of mapping out a long-term, 10-year strategy. I was hooked immediately. Over the ensuing three and a half years, the strategy has morphed due to engagement with the board, staff, teachers, students, and indeed, the community. Thousands of meetings, one-on-one conversations, town halls, emails, social media posts, and the like have attempted to get feedback, ensure equity across stakeholders, while adapting the approach on a near constant basis. Through this activity, the one thing that is clear is that there is no perfect community engagement approach. The work is hard, complex, grueling, and often thankless for all involved. But I am thankful for the previous and current administrations for pouring themselves into the work, and mostly for the care that has been taken as they try to simultaneously look into the future and work on the current. It's an unenviable task, and it's the future that I want to transition to. In early 2022, it became clear that our two primary goals with this long-term strategy was to address sustainability challenges of the district and provide our students, our ultimate constituency, with the robust academic, extracurricular, and social and emotional opportunities that they deserve, have been robbed of for far too long, and their peers in private schools and neighboring suburbs often take for granted. What also became clear was that neither of these goals would be achieved without a bold plan and the subsequent execution of that plan. Leadership often requires decisiveness, even in the face of opposition. In this case, our students' futures depend on it. I worry deeply about delaying the inevitable, or what delaying the inevitable will mean for an institution like ours. We know there are forces that fight against closure, not because they care about the district, but because they desire to create a future state absent of KCPS. I fear without bold action, the beginning of the end is near. And for someone who grew up in this district and began my service as a result of a desire to advocate for kids who look like me, grew up like me, and have all the potential that I have, I'm sad we're likely going to make a decision that prevents another generation of students from getting what they desperately need and deserve. In closing, regardless of the outcome of this vote tonight, I stand steadfast in my service to this district, this board, and this community in the best interest of students.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. June, I believe we are ready to call the roll on the motion in front of us. And I'll just restate it, to approve the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools to implement the revised Blueprint 2030 plan as presented to the Board of Directors on January 11, 2023.
Ms. Buckner?
No.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
No.
The motion passes, and I believe that, Dr. Collier, we are, the majority had voted in favor of the motion, so the motion passes. Dr. Collier, I recognize you. I recognize you to move on to our item number two.
All right. Thank you, board. We have about six more regular business items, so we'll try to move through those quickly. The first is Jim's Disposable Service. This is the standard contract that comes through. The administration recommends approval of the Agreement for Trash Removal Disposal, Recycling Services, Composting, and Document Destruction. The three-year contract amount is $258,000.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Sorry, let me read the script. Move to approve the contract with Jim's Disposable Service LLC for trash removal. Did you just read this?
Yeah.
Can you tell this is not my regular day job? So there's been a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's been a first and a second. June, please call the roll.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
The motion passes. I promise to get better.
Okay, our next item is Waste Management of Kansas. And just so there's clarity, people may say, well, isn't that similar to what we just passed? Yes, it is. One of the services, the first service, Jim's Disposable, covers one zone of the district, and then this next Waste Management of Kansas Incorporated covers two other zones within our district. So the administration recommends approval of the Agreement for Trash Removal Disposal, Recycling Services, Composting, and Document Destruction. The three-year contract is in the amount of $342,144.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
The move. Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded to approve the contract with Waste Management of Kansas. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Dr. Collier?
Okay, our next item is the Afghan Refugee Support to Our Schools Grant. The administration recommends approval to receive the Afghan Refugee Support to School Impact Grant for English-language learners. The two-year federal grant award is $500,000, and $504,005. I'm sorry, my mother's probably watching, and she's going to get on me tonight about reading these numbers, so, Mom, I'm just saying I'm sorry now.
Are you finished?
Yes, that's all.
Do we have a motion?
The move. Second.
There has been a motion and a second to approve the contract with Afghan Refugee Support to School Impact Grant, S2S, for English-language learners. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez? Ms. Ford? Dr. Jones? Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Dr. Collier, I recognize you.
Our next item is the Acceptance of the MACO, or M-A-C-C-O, Grant Funding. The administration recommends approval to accept the Missouri's Area Career Center Opportunity Grant to enhance CTE capacity by providing greater opportunities for students participating in CTE, also to create new high-demand and emerging programs and to enhance the current facilities. The federal grant award is $400,000 and requires district local match of 25%.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the MACO grant?
The move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Dr. Collier?
The next item is All Copy Products Second Amendment Contract. The administration recommends approval of the Second Amendment to extend the agreement of providing district-wide lease multifunction device services for 15 months, beginning April 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024. The not-to-exceed contract amount is $461,432.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract for all copy products?
The move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Dr. Collier, I'm recognizing you for the Gordon Parks Elementary Charter School.
Okay, and this is our last item. KCPS sponsor agreement with Gordon Parks Elementary School. The administration recommends approval of the charter agreement for KCPS to serve as charter school sponsor to Gordon Parks. As a sponsor, KCPS will receive 1.5% of Gordon Parks' local and state funding with an estimated amount of $18,444.
I will entertain a motion to approve the charter agreement with Gordon Parks Elementary School.
The move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the charter agreement and to serve as the charter sponsor for Gordon Parks Elementary. Is there any debate on the motion? I do have one clarifying question. Is this for a five-year renewal? Okay, it is for a five-year renewal, so I just want to make sure. Okay? Yes. Go right ahead, Dr. Jones.
I also wanted to just clarify, like, our metrics for performance apply to them as well. Is that correct?
Good evening. Regarding Gordon Parks Elementary School, it's a charter school. We are recommending, I am recommending, a five-year renewal for them. They have met the statutory metrics for renewal. That is something I had reviewed with the board previously, but just as a reminder, we look at their annual performance report scores, we look at their fiscally soundness, we look at their compliance with the law, as well as the services provided to their students. They are a school with approximately 137 students, 63.5% They are a school with approximately 137 students, 63.5% black, 16.1% Hispanic, 11.1%, 11.7% mixed race, and 8.8% white. They are 100% free and reduced lunch. They have exceeded APR scores of KCPS in 2017, 2018, and 2019. There are no scores, there are no scores available for 2020 because there was no state testing. 2021 scores may not be used for high-stakes decision-making, and the 2022 scores have yet to be released by DESI.
Thank you for that. Go ahead.
I will be abstaining from this vote because I feel like I don't know enough about this agreement, and so, you know.
Thank you. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the, oh, sorry. Is there any more debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
The motion passes. All right, I believe that brings us to the end of the regular business items, and we will move on to the consent item. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the items on the consent agenda. June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
The motion passes. June, next up would be a review of outstanding action items. I didn't think we had any, so I'm going to look down my, I don't see anybody saying anything, so thank you, Jan. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. So if there's no objection, the meeting will be adjourned. I just want to also say thank you very much for staying with us this entire evening. And the meeting, the next meeting will be February 8, 2023. The meeting's adjourned.